Hey, this is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Gewin. We've been here in Gewin for ten years, serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Gewin and Fayette. So come see me.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Gewin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at 205-468-4625.
I'm Rick Chandler with Marion County Funeral Home and Spry Memorial Chapel in Russellville, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. And we just wanted to advise the public of where we're standing, where we were fifteen years ago, and where we are now. When we purchased this funeral home, we were doing two or three funerals a year. Now we're doing eighty funerals a year. And we are so excited about the accomplishments that we've made. One of the things that we continually get into is families coming out here and talking about preleaves and saying, "Well, we have done something at another funeral home, or we've done this, and it wasn't like you're doing here." Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone about a preneed. Even monies that are spent on a preneed cannot come to the funeral home. They have to be into an insurance policy, or they have to go into a trust fund which is governed by the state. One of the things we'd like to ask people to do if there is a question about your preneed existence with another funeral home, regardless of where it might be, bring it out here to us at no charge, no obligation to you whatsoever. We want to make sure that your family is covered in the very best possible way they can, and do it in a legal manner, so that your money, when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there. Glenda does an excellent job consulting with the families, and if I need to be here, we will. Also, the same scenario in Russellville, Alabama, with Spry Memorial Chapel. But we are pleased to serve the public, and we plan on serving for years to come.
Hey, guys. This is Nick Jackson at New Heights Church in Hamilton, Alabama. I just wanted to extend to you an invitation to come check out one of our services. We start at 11:00 a.m. on Sunday mornings and 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday night. We're all about abiding, arming, and awakening. Also, we have a nursery ministry and a children's ministry, as well as functional on those Sundays. Our youth gather together on Wednesdays. Come on out and see what it's all about. We'd love to have you.
Hamilton Metal Roofing, located at 291 County Highway 25 in Hamilton. We sell 29 and 26 gauge roof metal. We have all types of trim and screws for you to complete your projects. Call us with any questions. Open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Call us at 205-921-7100.
I know, I'm just asking.
I think Kenneth's asking, he's been trying to nominate his for four years, or to pick him, and he ain't been able to. And I think that's the question he's asked.
Who?
Can Kenneth name his foreman?
This is how we typically do it. It's whoever's commissioner makes that nomination, and I'll vote to approve it. That's how we are. Kenneth is in special circumstances. We're not going to discuss that on here.
Let me ask you something, Scott, another question. See, I know he, and I ain't got our drugs. Comes out of his funds. I mean, I understand what he's talking about. Because our funds is totally different than the general fund. I mean, all other employees is paid out of it. Because what we, the more comes out of our funds sucks our district dry, some say. That cuts down the equipment, breakdowns, anything like that. The only question is, and I'm not going nowhere with this, I'm just asking a question. If he wants him as his foreman, can you just tell him to go right down the road one morning, hey, give him a foreman, and next check you're going to be back in a dollar or two more an hour? Can you do that?
This is the ideal way of doing it, is for him to make the selection, because it's his employee, his crew, and bring in front of the commission to finalize it and get the pay and all of that, is that right?
It's got to be voted on.
Right.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. Because this is what you do.
I've got, I've got a suggestion. All this foreman's paid at 1850. Can we, of course, we've got other foremen that ain't making that much. Can we, how do y'all feel about doing 1801, and then when we do budget, structure our foreman paid at 1850?
You're not talking about Tim's?
Yeah, I'm talking about every, every, this year, all both of these others.
I set mine at 1850, because Keith set his at 1850 a couple, three years ago, and his, his was, he had the money to do it, so why shouldn't he be able to?
And I'll, I'll take it over there on my part of mind. My man's been there eight, twenty years now, and he's been there eighteen when I give him a fifty, fifty cent raise, and it took me a year in battle to get him that fifty cents, because nobody thought he needed one, and it'd been seven years prior to that he'd had one. That's the reason I gave my foreman a raise. He'd been seven years without one, and he would make it seventeen whatever, and I give him the raise, and then we could come along and give him a fifty cents, which raised him to 1850 or whatever. But that's the reason mine got it, that he had eighteen years of experience. Now, he's got nineteen or twenty. But that's the reason I done that.
Well, I can say, as long as you got the money in your budget, I would just make a suggestion.
Oh, yeah.
I agree, it's, it's, it's within your budget, but that's the reason I gave mine a foreman, he hadn't had one in seventeen years, and he was the prior foreman. And we had the agreement when he come in, the prior commissioner told me that he was the foreman, and I put him on six months' trial, and I kept him as foreman, and he done what he said he'd do, and he still did what he said he'd do. That's the reason I didn't give him a raise, he hadn't had one. And we got everybody and their brother coming, raising, and we got them that's had raises in two years, five years, and there's, the way I look at it, there's a difference in eighteen years' job performance than two year or three year, like that, you know? But it's like, it's like Kenneth said, that's your money, and I, and I did make that statement, it's, it's our district, you know? And Dale's, I know what Dale done to his foreman, it was a quarter fifty cents every six months for four years to get him up to it. But everyone, that's up to y'all. But I understand what Kenneth said, too, very much.
Yeah, because all of our five districts are totally different than, than the general pop, the general employees, where they get paid out of theirs, where you're talking about the sheriff, you're talking about the courthouse, the more we spend in ours, the less you got to operate on. And that's, you know, that's the reason I only got two full-time employees. I could use ten. The work is there, the money's not there. That's the problem. I understand what y'all saying, every way around, but until we get some kind of pay scale in place, it's, I mean...
There ain't been a correct answer.
There's not a correct answer.
Well, I, I think, just by looking at it, and I think this is a shame. Bob's named a foreman in the last four years, Dale's named a foreman in the last four years, I've named a foreman in four years, and Tim's named one. I think it's crying shame, Kenneth can't name his own foreman. That's my point of view. And I know the situation we're in, but I just think it's crying shame that one commissioner can't name it on account of circumstance, and I'll leave it at that.
To my knowledge, I've been with the county going on eleven years, this is the first time there's ever been a foreman in District Four.
Nothing better off of that one.
Do we have a motion?
We have one, I've made the motion.
Oh, Bob made the motion.
Well, like on the next one, what Dale was talking about, I guess the next one comes out of different fund, and wait the budget season, or budget, when we budget, do the budget.
Yeah.
Because it's totally different funding. A lot of people don't understand this, but it's totally different funding.
I've, I've got, Kellen got a pay rate the other day, and some, I think Keith asked for it, and I got a copy of it. We're going to look over that. But it's hard to make adjustments everywhere. I mean, like you said, the money's not there.
No, because we got deputies wanting raises, we got, you got Page's office and Barker's office, nobody makes the same, nobody in the engineers' office, the women there, everything is totally different. Every, everybody's making it. It's just, it don't make sense what the page's got. It's just out of whack. And I know it's hard to say, hey, well, this one does this job, and this one does this one. And everybody over at a department wants to give their men and women raises, and misunderstanding. Just like the deputies. I wouldn't want to beat one, because you get shot out every day, but somebody, just crazy stuff going on. I mean, they, they deserve it.
But I ain't got shot at yet, but I've been cussed at a lot. We've got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
Have a second, all in favor? Next is Lance Byrd, moving Lance on up to solid waste supervisor at 1850 an hour.
This is the one that I was talking about. I ain't got a problem with Lance, does a good job and everything, but supervisor don't need to be making the same as a foreman, in my opinion.
Can you explain the differences in the job duties?
Yeah, so Lance is currently the solid waste officer, and we've had a supervisor position available, you know, vacant for a while. And so Lance, without being asked, has assumed the duties of the supervisor also, where he handles all the maintenance for the garbage trucks, the ordering parts, you know, he does the debt collection, he, I mean, he, he runs the solid waste office over there for us. And so I, instead of hiring somebody new to take the supervisor position, or to fill Lance's spot, if we were to promote him, just looking to combine both of those jobs, since Lance is doing it already anyway, and doing a great job, I'll add also. So I just wanted to promote him to supervisor over the solid waste, combine those duties, and begin to be paid at the supervisor rate.
What's that rate?
Seventeen fifty, I believe, an hour.
Is that what he's making now? And he, he's been at us for, what, two years? Since he came out of solid waste.
Correct.
Fourteen something. And he's making, so the last time he got a raise was two years ago, Tim. He went from sixteen something to seventeen fifty.
Right.
And Scott, the word supervisor should be synonymous with foreman, is that correct? From a legal and personnel standpoint, supervisor and foreman is the same word?
See, that's going to create a problem, because you've got Charles Pritchett as a foreman.
He's a foreman over two ways.
Eighteen oh one.
Right.
And he's going to be 1850. And see, you see the problem there?
Yeah.
So that's going to be a problem.
That's why I say budget time, we need to clarify.
Some of these issues in the personnel policy that have been drafted and we're still working through, we're trying to clarify some of these terms and get those as uniform across the county as we can. Kenneth mentioned there's, you know, a lot of different roles and different spots, but we're trying to get some of these titles clarified, so that we can get this note down a little bit easier.
I'm like Dale, we need to, I would say move it to 1850, when we do our budget next month, all foreman pay. That's what you're suggesting, isn't it?
Yeah.
Put a top out, top out cap on that. That's, that's one of the, that's what we, well, every, every office thinks that, and there's more people coming up on the budget for, or stuff like this, and try to get it equaled out, like Scott's saying, where it can do it.
And the new handbook, as Scott said, it has a lot of clarifications in it, or whatever. I've looked over the scale, model, whatever.
And I was, I think Lance has got thirteen years in his service, and that's, that's what I was looking at on this, like Charles, like he talked about. I think Charles has got maybe eighteen or twenty, and he's making eighteen. And my, mine, before they recommended this, was to raise it to eighteen, give him fifty cents, is that what, is you're asking for a dollar, is that what this is? And I was, I was thinking, give him a fifty and get him with Charles in six months down the road, or a year, you know, if, if he top out. The thing is, this is a problem we, we're having, and I think Scott agree with this. When you look at the county in a whole, everybody's topping out in five or six years, or seven or eight years of service. And how long do you think that's going to hold up, whether we're here or who? Everybody's going to raise this down the road, but right now, everybody's topping out at six or seven years. And I think these hands that's been there eighteen to twenty years needs to top out at eighteen or twenty, and then they ain't got a period of, a long period of wait to top out. That would be my point for that, because we can't keep raising the scale every year for a top out pay, if that makes sense, what I'm saying. But, but so Lance, if he tops out right now at 1850, and he's been there thirteen years, when he's there another six years, he's still sitting there without a raise. And if he gives it all at once, and, you know, unless the economy changes and gets to where we can get to, what it, what it needs to be, you know, whatever what y'all recommend anyway.
Because a lot of people don't know this either, is topping out at 1850 or whatever, a selected right here, on average forty hours a week, is twenty-three dollars an hour. That's what our pay is, on average forty hour a week. So. When's the last time you worked forty hour a week? I don't know when last time. Just that forty hour a week, excuse me. But I'm just saying, that's just the way it is. And I don't know what I keep bringing to the spot, the deputies, what do they talk about at?
The road deputies make seventeen twenty-three, and they get a dollar forty-four insurance, I mean, excuse me, uniform allowance, so it's eighteen something per hour. But there are some deputies who have investigator jobs, do make higher pay rates.
I guess a question between us, have y'all, have we'd rather do it in budget time, or have we'd rather give him fifty cents now and look at it six months, or?
You could also give your agreement about changing foreman pay, you can amend the agenda, and you can change what foreman pay tops out at right now, and that just settles it for Charles Pritchett and everybody. Or you can wait and do that at budget season, whichever you want to do.
Because, and just what you said, Kellen, if it, if it's 1850, and we do this with Lance, and I, I understand the job responsibility and stuff, but then Charles is at eighteen, basically the same thing, in eighteen or twenty years, I don't know how many, he gonna come back a month and say, you know, I need mine. So it's just a hard decision, but we, we've tried to make it work for everybody, I guess would be the best thing to say. How y'all want to do it?
It's a forty-nine cents per hour difference.
Got it. What's your take, Bob?
They all need to be on the same page, that thing. All have same responsibilities.
Y'all to amend the agenda and raise all supervisor pay to 1850. I think table that's where it tops out at. I think that one just went to the budget, because it's about six weeks away. I would so like to know what's in the budget for the next year. Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion.
Kenneth made a motion to table Lance's.
Before you go, can I make a statement, just in fairness to the other employees, we've already had one foreman being voted.
I think that, what you know about yours?
That's what I'm talking, when I said earlier about the funds, I know it don't make no sense, but his funds is totally different than what he's going to be paid out of.
So Lance's pay comes out of the fund that?
Solid waste is in good standing.
His solid waste went two ways.
Yep. Solid waste in butter standings and any of us. Well, I mean, you're only talking about six weeks.
Well, what's everyone paying, what they're giving? What have they been giving a fifty cent now, in six weeks, giving a fifty cent?
That's give everybody, no one what else makes.
We can go ahead and do these here, and then amend the rest of them, and... But it'd be good time.
You go, are we going, are we going to use this too on, on years of service? Or we just going to give everybody a foreman that pay, but off the top? I mean, I think years of service counts for a lot, and I think when you go to the, when you go to the pay scale countywide in these offices and different departments.
Well, I think we're talking pretty good, but I mean, of fifteen, twenty year, most of all of us are, are foremans who've got that kind of service.
I, I would agree to do what Bob said, I would say give Lance fifty cents, and look at the other. That, that'll get him the same as Charles and them, and, and look at the other when the budget comes. It don't matter, ever what y'all want.
It's not the same as Charles. Charles makes 1801.
Okay.
If, if we were giving fifty cents, it would be equal with Charles, but?
Right, sixteen something, or seventeen something. Y'all last may pull.
Yeah. The choices are, you can either vote to, to do what's on the agenda, or you can vote to amend the agenda to change foreman pay, or you can vote to table the issue of Lance. Those are your choices.
What Bob's foreman was just to raise.
I make that motion. These are foreman paid to 1850, and now adjust it to whatever budget time, and I'll have my board ready to be there.
Help me understand what motion you're making. You're making a motion to amend the agenda to change foreman pay to 1850?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, Scott, where we at? Kenneth had made a motion.
We've, we've got two motions on the table.
Yeah.
We've got one to table it all together, and another to maybe up to 1850.
What we need to?
We need a second on one of the two, or?
One of them needs to make, would draw their motion.
One motion, just table it till we look at the budget.
You can call for a second.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you made the motion.
Kenneth made, Kenneth made a motion first to table it until budget time. You wanting to table it all together, not give Lance nothing, did they? Yeah, not anybody right now, just say, look at the budget.
Well, you gonna have, what are you going to do about Kevin?
They've already voted on it.
Uh-huh.
He's done voted on it.
I know, so, so you want to table his, but we've already voted on it.
That's what I was explaining a while ago, Mr. Bob, it's totally different accounts. I mean...
I don't know, but we, we voted on it.
Yeah, you done voted on it.
Yeah. So we're going to...
Mine stands, because this done been voted in. Correct, Scott?
That's right.
Where we're at right now, does anybody, do I have a second?
I already did his table, if he, if yours stands.
Can, do, do we have a second on tabling Lance's till budget time? Don't matter to me.
How second?
All right, now first and second. Have anybody, all in favor? I guess we'll table it.
Budget's in there like six weeks.
We'll pass the budget in September, but we're going to start discussing the budget August 18th.
Okay.
Just a minute and a half. Was that any of Adam's votes to table it, or did anyone oppose?
Anybody oppose?
I didn't vote, I, I think we were just, if we're going to do one, we need to do the other, but I'm fine, and whatever, but it's what's...
I just had to clarify what the...
I didn't vote it out. Next up, we had a lot of, I don't know if it's miscommunication or misunderstanding on County Route 14, on, we are not renaming County Route 14. There will be a section of it up by the school, by the track field, that will have signs put up, the young man that this will be done for wants it to say Trey Way. His name is Trey, and that's what he wants. Very proud of the young man, he signed a contract with Adidas, I don't know if that's going to be his professional pitch, Trey Way or what, but that's what he wants. I've got calls from 911 and people, you know, what's our new address going to be? We are not changing County Route 14. Next, we got open pipe bids, they, it's not on the agenda, we just overlooked it. For plastic pipe, we've got two bids. First, first bid is from J&amp;G Pack, the bids were just left for three months, because pipe's just, nobody knows, just been going outside. Prices, they have quoted our pickup prices, delivery can be made at a dollar and a quarter per mile. I'm going to open this other bid, and then if it's okay with everybody, I'm going to give them to the engineer, and let him read them, look over them.
He'll make a recommendation on this.
He'll make a recommendation.
So at the Hamilton, how much you save per mile, Tim?
Dollar and a quarter.
We deliver about fifty dollars delivered, charge. That's even if you buy gas and it'll be out.
Yeah.
It's the easiest way to open that, but...
As long as that knife is, it's not going to...
It's your arm, huh? This is plastic feed.
Yeah, this bid, and it's from Adco out of Florence, Alabama. All their prices are pickup prices, don't think they even quote anything for delivery. But just for an instance, on a 12-inch pipe, J&amp;G is, twenty foot is a hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. Theirs is twelve dollars and ten cents per foot, which would be, Kellen?
Oh, that was nuts.
Hundred and forty-some odd dollars, a hundred and...
You wouldn't listen.
I didn't know I was going to wrap my head in this.
Adco was...
Adco didn't give, they give a price per foot.
I'm listening now, if you want to say numbers again.
Twenty foot, twelve dollars and ten cents.
Be two hundred and forty-two dollars.
Ten dollars.
No, that's, what'd you say?
I multiplied those numbers, I don't know what you're asking.
Twelve times, I mean, twenty times.
Twenty times twelve dollars and ten cents. Twenty times twelve dollars and ten cents.
Two hundred and forty-two dollars.
That's over a hundred dollar pipe more than J and G, just looking right off the bat. But, but we, Chris can look things over and we'll go over his. Do we need to make a motion or anything, just?
No, we can't award it the same day as the other.
No. Y'all can look at that.
Adco twelve, ten and J and G is that much?
No, no, Adco's two forty-two.
That's two forty, no, about twenty foot feet.
Yeah.
Per foot. How much is Adco per foot?
Twelve dollars and ten cents per foot.
Twelve dollars and ten cents.
Well, I tell you, what, what's J and G?
She didn't break it down per foot, she just put the.
I divided one thirty-two with twenty.
One thirty-two divided by twenty.
So one thirty-two eighty.
That's a big difference. Y'all one thirty-two eighty?
That's a big difference.
One hundred and nine dollars and ten cents difference.
Nine dollars, no?
One hundred and nine dollars difference.
But how much a foot?
Oh, what, what do we, one third?
Hundred dollars per foot, do about six and a half dollars per foot.
Yeah. On a, on a twenty inch, forty inch plastic pipe, uh, six dollars sixty-four cents per.
Sixty-four for twelve inch.
Adco is ninety-eight dollars and forty-six cents a foot, which would come to nineteen hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents. J and G is twelve hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents, over seven hundred and something dollars more.
I think our.
Is that?
I don't think that'd be hard for.
Is that even shipping it or bringing it in?
They, they might have the delivery charge figured in.
They've been, truck loaded, the truck, bring.
No, everything they've got, Chris.
They wouldn't tell anybody they bring truck load.
Everything, it, Florence's pickup, I mean, it's down above it.
So you can have about fifty, sixty bucks a trip to it, I mean, you go, you go add in more coverage, but, yeah, I think it's pickup price. J and G's done a good service to the county for many years.
Big one.
They're having a little harder time now doing it, but that's cause.
You can't even get twenty foot, I mean, twenty-four foot pipe.
They can't get it.
No, they can't get it.
I tried to get them to get me some other day and they said I can't get it. All right, that's all we have on the agenda today, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, for adjourn, do we even bid, uh, metal pipe anymore or just?
Forget it.
We do, uh, but we're not giving any bids, we're not receiving any bids back when we.
Well, I should review concrete, I, I mean, uh, metal pipe.
There is still a state bid though.
We still, if we buy steel, right, we buy it off state bids, what we voted on sometime back. Anybody else got any comments? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, sorry.
All in favor? We are adjourned.
Hey, this is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Gewin. We've been here in Gewin for ten years serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, um, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Gewin and Fayette, so come see me.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Gewin off of I twenty-two. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at two oh five four six eight four six two five.
Uh, I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral Home and Stry Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochran, our manager out here, and we just wanted to advise the public of where we're standing, where we were fifteen years ago and where we are now. When we purchased this funeral home, we were doing two and three funerals a year. Now we're doing eighty funerals a year. And we are so excited about the accomplishments that we've made. One of the things that we continually get into is families coming out here and talking about preneeds and saying, well, we have done something at another funeral home or, or we've done this and it wasn't like you're doing here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in two thousand and two, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone about a preneed. Even monies that are spent on a preneed cannot come to the funeral home. They have to be into an insurance policy or they have to go into a trust fund which is governed by the state. One of the things we'd like to ask people to do if there is a question about your preneed existence with another funeral home, regardless of where it might be, bring it out here to us at no charge, no obligation to you whatsoever. We want to make sure that your family is covered in the very best possible way they can and do it in a legal manner so that your money, when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there. Glenda does an excellent job consulting with the families and if I need to be here, we will. Also, the same scenario in Russell, Alabama, Stry Memorial Chapel. But we are pleased to serve the public and we plan on serving for years to come.
Hey guys, this is Nick Jackson at New Heights Church in Hamilton, Alabama. I just wanted to extend to you an invitation to come check out one of our services. We start at eleven AM on Sunday mornings and seven PM on Wednesday night. We're all about abiding, arming and awakening. Also, we have a nursery ministry and a children's ministry as well as functional on those Sundays. Our youth gather together on Wednesdays, come on out and see what it's all about, we'd love to have you.
Hamilton Metal Roofing located at two ninety-one County Highway twenty-five in Hamilton. We sell twenty-nine and twenty-six gauge roof metal. We have all types of trim and screws for you to complete your projects. Call us with any questions, open Monday through Friday, seven AM to four PM. Call us at two oh five nine two one seven one zero zero.